Okay, good evening. I would like to call the Tuesday, March 21st, 2023 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I do not have any announcements this evening. With that said, is there anyone here that wants to discuss anything that's not currently on our agenda? Seeing as none, we will move right into our first agenda item, which is the presentation of the Richard J. McLaughlin Award by the Douglas Police Department.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
This is Mrs. Lisa Mead, and I'm just going to read off what I wrote up here. Thank you for putting us on the agenda. This is our fourth year, but third, obviously COVID affected it, and we're a little late getting into it this year, but appreciate the time. So over the years, one of the things that I have come to find interesting is the unique circumstances around each person or their acts of giving. This year's nomination involves something that most of us see on a daily basis but never stop to think about what goes into it or who does it. That being said, this year's Community Service Award is being presented to Mrs. Lisa Mead, who is a lifelong resident of Douglas. Mrs. Mead has been taking care of the seasonal plantings in the Granite Water Trough on Main Street since the retirement of Mr. Colonero many years ago. She received a number of nominations from within our community describing how much effort she puts into her work and what it takes to make this possible by trucking in all of her supplies and water. In combination of several of the reference letters, it was stated that she takes pride as a lifelong resident in keeping this area lovely year-round, both for residents and visitors. Whether hot or cold, she makes this area presentable and does so without contributions, taking on all the costs herself. Although what may be considered a simple effort, it has made an impact to our community. Both our family and those who nominated you want you to know that your efforts are appreciated and deserving of this award. So, thank you. And before I present this award, I would also like to mention another nominee, who was Jean Rigotti, also a Douglas resident who works with children at the library through their Reading with Cooper program. And I'll be visiting with Jean in the coming week to present her with a donation to you as in her discretion and appreciation of her efforts to our community. And I know the nominees, the nominator said that you don't like any help with money, but we are going to make a donation to you for your spring planting as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm just going to read it before we present it. It is the 2022 Officer Richard J. McLaughlin Community Service Award, and this is presented to Lisa Mead in appreciation and recognition of your continued commitment to the community through volunteerism and selflessness, presented by the McLaughlin family in cooperation with the Douglas Police Department.
Very honored. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, it's much appreciated, the work that you do downtown.
Thank you. It's fun, actually. But I do have help. And if you could see it in your hearts to maybe put a water fountain down there for me?
Downwater, let's run that plate.
A little faucet right there would be helpful. It'll keep me going for a while.
All right.
Thank you very much. I'm on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
Who's the one I'll check out for again?
What's?
Number two.
Oh, you're checking out again? All right. You can take a nap or do whatever it is that you gotta do. Next on the agenda is the follow-up discussion with our Open Space Committee regarding Chapter 61B Walnut Street and possible votes, and the vice chairman is going to recuse himself. Hey, Mike, if you see Matt, can you see if he can come in?
Want this one?
Yeah.
So, thank you for having us back, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
How are you?
Quite well. See you in the spring. I'm Lisa Mosinski, the vice chair of the Open Space Committee. This is Gordon LaRivier, Becky Gallagher, who is the secretary, and Kathy Richardson. The chair sends her regrets she could not be here tonight. So, as follow-up from the last meeting, we were very interested in pursuing the possibility of the taking or the acquisition of a Chapter 61 parcel that was on Walnut Street, being taken out of Chapter 61B. And we're curious if the town council had any comment or recommendation.
That's why I asked Matt to get brought back in. I didn't realize he was going to get tied up out there.
Well, regardless, we would like to hear what town council may have to say. But in the meantime, we have done further due diligence, because you also asked if there was any possibility that Metacom and Land Trust had any resources to put toward this at the moment. And I did ask the board, and at this time, they do not. But in the meantime, the chair, Sue Perkins, and I contacted the owner of the property. And we had a discussion with her because it appears that, and board members, correct me if I'm wrong, but that the assessor's maps had not been updated to reflect the new configuration of her boundaries that she had established with her engineer for house lots along Walnut Street. So, what happens, and I'm happy to pass this around, but if you can see it, will you help me pull that up? This was the lot in question?
Yep.
That on the assessor's map, it was clear to us that it bounded this parcel, which the town already owns. I think it was given to the town as part of a previous subdivision. And this is Tinkerville Brook right here. So, our request was that we would have access through this lot to the town-owned property, which also exits out onto Chestnut Street. Through this configuration of these four lots that she has made as, with her surveyor, this lot, in fact, does not meet the lot that the town owns. However, this other lot, 20-something acres, does.
Okay.
So, this is a small parcel, a small passageway that we would not connect with. So, when we talked to her, of course, no agreements, no promises made, et cetera, et cetera. But she, in the future, is possibly looking at making a cul-de-sac or further development on this lot. Because this is at the Brook, and this is probably not going to qualify as a house lot, she would entertain a discussion with the town to, in some way, give us access so that we could reach that parcel, 20-plus acres, that the town owns, so that we can at least create trails or other, basically trails, so that people in that part of town could also hike and enjoy that beautiful Brook.
All right, so the large outer lot, it's also hers. The smaller lots are the subdivided of the existing parcel.
Correct. But she did this with her engineer and then submitted it as a Chapter 61 request. This has not made its way to the assessors.
Okay.
So, we did not have this updated information, basically, until Sue and I went down there on Saturday, I believe it was.
So, until the future date, that one parcel that we're considering acquisition under 61A would be basically kind of on an island until we can either establish it right away or if she's willing to do something regarding connectivity to the town land, right?
That's correct.
Is she willing to wait while we try to sort this out and see what we can do?
Well, she's making decisions on this other parcel herself.
Right.
And there's a possibility that, you know, she would ask for tax credits, or it might not even be a complete cash transaction. She is flexible and willing to work with us. But we wanted to share that with you. We wanted to hear what town council had to say, and we wanted to just reinforce through this process that we have the opportunity, when a Chapter 61 property comes up, we have the opportunity to pull back and look at, oh, does this connect to something that the town needs to have access to or that would, because it's contiguous to the town property, that would develop future recreational possibilities for the particular parcel that we already own. Any questions? So, at this point, it's, we're going to have to wait and see.
What she does with the rest of that.
Correct.
And she's willing to wait while we sort this out, so to speak, and see what will work for everybody?
She's working on a plan to see what would, you know, and so that is in a process. But right now, the only parcel under discussion was this Lot 1.
I'm wondering if it's something that she'd be willing to sit on the Lot 1 based off of her future plans and see if there was a way that we could work it out so it does become a contiguous piece of property? Because, I mean, right-aways are messy. They can be, anyway.
Well, you, town, you know, she's willing to talk to the town. The other possibility is that, you know, in the future, if she did, and plus, it's very, a lot of it is wet, but she did put a cul-de-sac in here at some point, maybe there's an easement that could be done between two residential lots. But I don't even know what the permitting would be for that, and that it would have to go along with some deed at some point so that we have permanent access.
In speaking with the landowner, have you, I know we're kind of in a wait-and-see mode, but is there a fire in our belly to act on this, or can we hold out another year or so when the town may have a little more financial flexibility?
The impression I got was that she is trying to continue to sell this parcel, and then she has three other parcels, A and R, approval-not-required parcels, that she could process. She's working with her new engineer to figure out what can be done, because this would have to be a separate driveway into, or road, basically, and she needs to, she needs to know what her frontage options are and things like that. If the administrator wants to have a conversation with her, I'm sure she's open to that. But my impression, yeah, my impression was she at least is proceeding with this, and because it's under Chapter 61 clock, she would, I don't know, I'm not going to answer legally for what her process.
No, I know. It's probably a non-rare question.
Yeah.
But speaking for the board, we want to, in the future, we want to proceed so that we can, I know this particular lot presented a lot of confusion, but when a parcel comes up for Chapter 61, review it to the town's benefit, to do its due diligence, and take its time, and make sure we look at all angles and not that, and because I think the Open Space Committee pulls back and says, oh, what's the potential here for, in this case, what we already own and what we can do to improve access and future recreational development? And it's not just, oh, it meets the checklist for an A and R lot and not to be processed.
Matt, did we hear back from land council regarding this?
We heard back from Rich Bowen.
Oh, Rich Bowen, yes. Sorry.
Oh, do you want to come up? We took your chair or whatever.
You can sit here, Matt.
There's no chairs.
Right in.
Right here.
You can take Mr. Fitzpatrick's chair.
This is the skinny chair. No comments. Rich basically said, now, this is a, this is a quick up-or-down vote on the specific issue that's before you. If the commission has a strategy going forward, we should engage and work towards a common purpose and get there. But if, what is the commission's final outcome on this specific lot?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see when you came in. We.
I just got in.
We spoke to the owner, and in fact, this lot, the way it has been drawn on top of the previous lot, it does not abut the town property.
So, you're recommending, basically, a pass, but there's another strategy for another piece there?
Correct.
So, that, you're just going to reaffirm your vote that you took in the second session at that point?
What I like about your idea is this is away from the forest, and there's another end, and the town already has that land there, so if you can come up with some access to it, it looks like a good acquisition for the town.
So, if we vote to acquire this under the 61A, then we start entering into a PNS with it? That's just a process question.
You're so far out of this timeframe at this point. There is a process, there's one for purchase, and there's the other for if it's taken out for another.
No, I just want to clarify. The information we've collected means that we do not see the value of this lot being added to the town's acquisition, to the town's holdings.
Gotcha.
It does not abut the.
But the piece next to it.
The piece that the town currently owns is already the town's. There's a section that she owns that's separate, it's a very narrow section, it's not like she could put that into a house lot, but it leads to another.
I remember. I was just, I lost you on what the position the open space was taking, so you.
Yes. So, the open space, because we talked to the owner and we got clarification that the difference between the assessor's maps and her newly drawn house lots was a narrow portion that did not connect.
Okay.
But she still retains that wraparound. So, unless, you know, a few, yeah, future possibilities, but for the purpose that we are here for tonight, to improve the value to the townspeople of that existing town holding, this does not qualify.
Okay. So, you don't mind us waiving that and then being receptive to when you come up with potentially a purchase to be contiguous with the town's property?
Correct. And if it's fine with the board, we will continue to talk with the owner and see what we can come up with.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah.
So, everybody?
Yep. I follow you.
No, but, but part of this would have been, I think, clarified if we, if we weren't rushing, because it seemed like there was misunderstanding that there's 120 days here to look into it and to make a decision, and it doesn't have to be processed as soon as the paperwork comes in. That's the law, and it's for the town's possible benefit.
On that, I would say lesson learned. All right. It's good to be reminded that there's an Open Space Committee that knows far more about the wooded areas in town than four guys at a selectmen's meeting looking at a map that may or may not have had a lot of toner when it was printed. So, thank you for that. But having said that, I would make a motion that we do not exercise the 61B purchase.
Write a first refusal.
Write a first refusal on the property nearer on Walnut Street.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And by all means, please continue conversations with the property owner.
Thank you. We'd also, we'll talk to Matt in the future, but we'd like to review the process of the notification and the work with other committees and commissions in the town, because we did write a letter that said we wanted to come before you, and for some reason, that got missed. But Auburn has a process that looks very interesting as far as dotting all the i's and crossing the t's so that we make the best possible decision for the town when we get there.
Sounds good.
So, we appreciate your time.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your work. All right. So, we have a follow-up discussion for compacters with the Board of Health. And should I run out and grab Mr. Fitzpatrick?
As long as he hasn't been compacted.
He may have been. It appears that we do not have the Board of Health here.
I would just assume passover.
And that is what we will do.
Is he coming back in on his own, or?
I would think so.
Yo, Mike!
There he is. So, we're passing over the compacters' discussion. Whitenfield Fish and Game change of officers for ABCC and possible votes. And I do not have anyone here from Whitenfield Fish and Game. So, we will pass over number four.
It's just the change of officers that we need to hold up?
Yeah, maybe we just won it anyway.
Well, we can. We usually just have somebody here in case there's any questions, but we see all paperwork's been completed for review. All right.
Knowing they're not going anywhere, I would make a motion that we approve the change of officers and ask them to be on their best behavior.
Second.
Motion's been.
You got a timely double second on that one.
A timely double second. The motion's been made and timely double seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Building condition report for the Fire Department and possible votes. Let me get to that. Mr. Administrator, you're now free to take your chair back, sir.
Some of us are bouncing between this meeting and FinCom, so it's a little busy.
You're doing a stellar job of the bouncing.
So, we're looking to address a number of situations at the fire station at Leek, which is air quality. We have retained the services of the engineering firm, McRichie, they were supposed to be finishing up on, and generator, backup generator replacement project. You recall that we added HVAC to that contract, paid $8,000 for them to review the situation at the station, and then gave them a go-ahead to add that to our contract for electricity, the electrical service of the building, so that it would accommodate all new appliances. And I think what we're learning, I don't like to disparage businesses in open session on camera, but to this point, it has not been a timely interaction. And I'm sending quite a few reminders of, you need to tell us what's going on and what next steps are. Because the notion here was that we were going to take out those pieces of the project that could be done immediately and get them done immediately, and that would include sequestering all the turnout gear in a specific space and then evacuating the air from that space and then bringing in clean makeup air, but keeping those contaminants away from staff. And that was, that's a priority, and it is part of this project. So, I am awaiting, either McRichie gets off its stuff and finishes this project and gives us shop drawings so we can go out to bid. The alternative is, and I'm seriously considering doing this, because we don't have time to waste on other people's employment issues or workflow issues. As soon as I hear back from West End Sampson, which was the architect-engineering firm that we picked to do, to be our house doctor and to handle all of our public safety and highway buildings, tell them, look, you've got the bandwidth, reach into your bench and get us the people we need and take over this project and just terminate the contract with McRichie if we can't get results. I realize we're a small town, I realize this may not be the biggest project they have, but it's a really big, important project to us. And when we hire them, with the project they're doing with this building, they at least got the shop drawings done, everything's done, the generator has been ordered, so the delay is receipt of the generator for this building. We haven't even ordered a generator for the Fire Department yet, so it's completely unacceptable at this point that it's taking so long. That's one issue. The second issue is, I'm having one of those nights. So, we've got the engineering. We have a quote in your packet from Will Scott. This would be the cost for each individual temporary trailer for sleeping quarters outside so that we could get staff away from the interior of the building. This is not a heavy reach, it's a 12-month minimum, and so this is what, I wish this was being handled better by McRichie, because if we could resolve this in a couple of months and build, build out some structure inside the station, I wouldn't enter into a lease for 12 months for these fairly expensive units. So, it's $21,000. Having said that.
That's two?
No, I think that's, no, that's each.
About how many?
So, I would do two, so you would have space for four.
Two, right.
But we at least have a quote now, which is, which means that it's actionable. We have to identify the funding source.
This is a bit of my question, the funding source, it's coming out of.
So, Jean's not here for the past couple of days, so we have to identify the funding source. But, you know, the most readily available source would be ARPA, and I don't know what we have left.
We have about $36,000 left. $15,000 is on, Matt, something else.
We held $15,000 for an employee.
They left $51,000 there, so at least about 36.
So, it's swingable. So, I, the way this would work, then, is there would be a mandatory posting under Massachusetts' law for quotes, not for average. So, as long as I got three quotes or at least two responses and one written, I choose not to quote, that would be sufficient to meet the Massachusetts procurement laws, and we'd go from there. This would be a custom build for us, so it might take a couple of days, but it wouldn't be months. I know there's another issue of concern to the, to the union regarding insurance coverage, is that we didn't post this for conversation. I think the chair told me before the meeting that you prefer to do that during the comments at the end, items not anticipated 48 hours in advance. But I've been working with our insurance broker to find a solution that I think everybody's going to like.
So, I think the first thing, and I'll ask the rest of the board.
We could advance that conversation to now if you.
Yeah. My question would be, is would you have a problem taking out of order items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting to run concurrent with this one so we can address both the Fire Department's concerns upfront?
I don't have an issue with that. It would be a lot easier, more fluid if we did.
There's not a lot of votes or debate, it's a report from me, but you're hearing it in open session on camera in front of the union so that we have a record of the conversation.
I don't have a problem.
Tim, any objection?
No, I think that's, given that people's time is valuable, I would recognize that what you're about to say is probably sensical.
I'll set, Mr. Chairman.
Floor is yours.
So, I inquired with Gallagher, which is the, our insurance consultant, for our town benefits. And one of the, one of the positive things about the way we manage this group insurance, health benefit, is that we are in charge of plan design. We're not. We're not insured. We don't have a carrier. We're self-insured, so we design our own plan. The town of Stoughton, recently the Stoughton firefighters negotiated a contract that has enhanced coverage for firefighters to get additional screening tests and additional visits with doctors that would be completely paid for by the plan. So I don't really think that that's going to change the cost to the town or to the employee at all. Right? That's going to be a benefit. We'll see how much it costs us. But it's a screening benefit, which is what we've been encouraging people to do, all of their screenings on a regular basis, because if we catch you before you get too sick, it's much more, it's better for you health-wise, it's better for the taxpayer cost-wise. So this is what we're doing. We're going, looking at this. I can tell the union later exactly where to find it in the Stoughton contract. It's page 45. But that union negotiated a specific battery of tests that they want on a regular basis, so the town's, we're very willing to put this into your plan, so, yeah.
We already have a battery of tests that are in our CBA array. So I think the concern that we have at the moment is, or the questions that we have at the moment, uh, come out of, is we have these already built into the CBA, so we get our annual screenings, which are pretty multifaceted. They include chest CT, they include blood work, they include multiple scans to do early detection and prevention. So the question that we had was, one, when something does pop up, who would be the responsible party when it comes to the fiduciary stuff?
So it's...
Co-pay, whether it be that stuff, seeing that that's already written into our CBA. So do we wait until something pops and then you have to wait for a complete diagnosis? Because again, it's already in the contract that, and it's budgeted on an annual basis for all seven members to have these wellness screenings annually. So if something, if something does pop, and the other question would be, I know you're working with the town's insurance and the town senate and stuff, how would that affect the membership that doesn't take the town insurance? Is that still covered down?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I can answer
The first one.
Each one of Tony's question, 20 questions in order, but they're all excellent questions. I'm glad you're asking them. There is a nuanced difference between what the CBA, what the town pays for under the CBA and actually having an insurance plan, so then the town isn't actually paying out of the operating budget. It's coverage that the town purchases for you. So there may be more flexibility, especially if you have something that you're watching or that you're concerned about, to add tests and work within the parameters of the plan above and beyond the minimums guaranteed in your CBA. So I'm thinking that this is going to be significantly more generous and more useful to you. It is true. I don't know what to say, how that affects you if you're not on the town's plan. So at that point, we would be reverting to the cancer presumption or other presumptions in the contract. And I absolutely want to emphasize this point. The town of Douglas is the only town in the Commonwealth that has this level of, in my mind, progressiveness in its contract. We, we're going to presume the cancer connection to your profession regardless of how long you've worked for us, and we'll cover as if you were on IOD those tests. So that was a, the conversation we had with a member recently, that situation is quite different because of there was a retirement. So the retirement's this bright line we don't go past, right? We don't have to go past, so we don't. So if you were, if you had a diagnosis and it interfered with your ability to work and you were ordered out of work, so now you're out on IOD, regardless of whether Maya honored your claim, the town would still pay any co-pays or anything that's not covered by your health insurance. Because the IOD's been denied, so you're still reverting back to your insurance. So I would encourage people to compare, and I can line up the experts that the union would need, Mr. Chairman, if they're interested in it, to go through various plans and compare provision to provision, to at least call attention to those provisions that may, in the, in the paper, that may be most useful to you or not. I know that there's, Aflac has cancer coverage. They have other severe illness coverage, so you can take advantage of that. The question would be, is that on an individual basis, would that be more or less useful to you than pursuing the Stoughton op, we'll call it the Stoughton option? But that's a conversation we can, we don't have to have with the select board. We can have, you can invite us to talk about it, and we'll, we'll go ahead.
Does that answer your questions?
I believe that does answer my question.
He's trying to keep up with how many yes.
Okay, all right. Does it answer your questions to your satisfaction?
I think that answers my questions to satisfaction, yes.
Well, we have work to do. I think there's still, there's a lot of unanswered questions, but...
We have a, there's a goalpost that's been, you know, set, so now we, we know now where we're going from here. We now know that, you know, there's something in play to work out these details, and the avenues can be through the town's insurance plan, so.
My personal humble opinion is the jobs that you guys do, you have enough to worry about. So co-pays and bills and sickness that's inherent to the nature of your job isn't something that should be on the forefront of your head, and I'm sorry that it is at the time being. Yep?
So just for this next fiscal year, we budgeted approximately $12,000 for screening tests without, I'm in the process of getting quotes for these, and there are certain screening tests that normally you would only have to have every five years, and one example of that particular test is a chest CT. There are certain members here who may need to have that screening test done every single year. And I guess I just want some guarantee that if we're going to need more money to do those screening tests until we can figure out the insurance part, that we kind of have your word that the funding for that will be supported, particularly for the members that aren't on the town's insurance. Because that would be over and above the other regular testing that we're supposed to have every single year, so it would essentially double the cost for the members that are affected.
I have, I, I'm one of four, just being candid. My personal opinion is I have no issues with that.
My question, Mr. Chairman, is it in the budget that you've proposed? Is it in your expense budget?
I padded it to the, to try to be conservative and not...
Padded?
No padded.
There's no padding.
I added the amount that I thought would be reasonable to cover the cost of the testing.
Okay.
But I don't have quotes because the people are still getting back to me, and I'm not sure what the vendor is going to be, so I added as much as I thought would be appropriate without overdoing it.
So that money's in the budget?
Yeah, the vendor that we did the first year when we, when we got on with COMFIRE.
Yep.
That vendor's not servicing Massachusetts now, so we had to go up for, look at a different vendor. And this year, we did the Harrington one at Harrington Hospital, so we're in, we're in the process of trying to find that new vendor.
So, well, as it's in the budget, I would encourage them to continue to build it into the budget, because that's one of the things that, you know, again, my opinion, we should be addressing for you guys.
But if the number is too shallow, we may come back to fall town meeting for an adjustment.
Understood.
Okay.
Sounds like a consensus.
Do you have anything, Tim? Questions, comments?
No.
No? Back to the trailers, I guess?
Yeah, I feel like I'm flying without my wingman, without the finance director's, you know, emphasis on precision in this conversation. But if, I suppose, you, if you wanted to take a vote on this, you could say it this way, that contingent upon
Appropriation.
The necessary funds being, remaining in ARPA.
That's, that's one way of doing it. The term of this lease is for 26 months.
Well, that's a, that's a quote. Did she put, we have a 12-month quote. That's what we're going to do, 12 months.
So it says on here, it says minimum lease billing period 26. I would assume that's 26 months.
Yeah.
Put the wrong quote in.
I, I don't, I know what I asked for. I asked for a 12-month lease.
Right, so...
So this is just, this is the wrong copy. So we got a 26-month quote that I rejected. I wanted a 12-month quote.
Yeah, so it may be less than this?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you're going to just take the monthly, monthly repeating cost.
Well...
So your fixed costs are in the middle of this quote. And then your recurring, your recurring charges without tax, because we don't pay tax, were 521. So if you follow me, the 5, 7, 7, 5, 1, 2 is the one-time cost.
Yep.
And then the 521 per month. Obviously, it's going to be a little, little over 6,000.
Yeah, so if you just jump down to the next section, you have your total delivery and installation charge of $4,775.12, and then you have...
Total included recurring billing charges.
With the, yeah, the next one down is actually with the tax included, so it's $5,000 off of that, so you're looking at about $13,000.
That's $11,027.12 for each unit, and we would do that twice. So it's, call it $23,000.
Well, I believe we have that in ARPA. Because I know it was 1,651,000. We went 1,600,000 for this line here and left $51,000.
So thinking this through, how much would it cost to, we would have to put an electrical service to them?
So what was your total you just came up with for 12 months?
With the fixed cost, with the setup and return cost, $11,027.
That's for two units?
One.
One unit, so it's 22,000.
Change.
So we have $36,000 in there. You should have more than enough if you...
Yeah, I know. I was looking for, not, not to exceed the amount so that if I needed to...
$30,000. They give you $7,000 to do any hookups that you need to do while the other stuff is done. And then the only thing they'll have to consider is budgeting the, the cost of running that per month, similar to what we're doing at the highway bond.
So what would, it would be incumbent upon the chief and assistant chief to determine the location where you want this to be, and preferably it'd be in a place where we can get the electricity to it that won't cause any issues.
Are we going to be responsible for the cost of the electricity on our budget for this trailer? Is this part of the cost off of ARPA?
Run off.
Has we been figured for that?
It'd be in your operating budget. We can check and see how much Highway pays for their one and use that. It's a, it's not a lot of money.
This is Z-PY-32, I think.
Yeah.
I would say it makes most sense to put it on that far side of the grassy area, probably where, towards the highway bond on that side.
Well, you're away from the building?
Yeah.
The only, the only concern is during the winter months, getting from the unit into the building where you have to get all your gear and your equipment.
I would probably ask the folks that set these up in terms of where they would need to get the electricity from, where they might suggest that it goes.
It just needs to be level, I think, that's the more...
I would assume they're going to prefer to be closer to the building, so that way you're not trenching or...
It's extra shoveling if there's snow.
If it's in the back of the building, it could potentially block our days, so that might not be an appropriate spot for it.
We can put one where that big red rescue's parked at the flat tire.
You're back on that. We can, we can do this offline.
Yeah, I figured. That'll be up for you guys. The most important thing is to have a game plan as to how you're going to accomplish it. So do you need a...
I would entertain a motion.
I would just say, before we do that, ARPA's kind of the easy plug-and-play to this. Can we work this into the budget as-is? Having seen no budget numbers.
So, so the answer is no. I wouldn't have gone straight to ARPA. I would have gone straight to the budget.
And only because of the pain I'm going through with capital right now, that's why I went straight to it. There is no, and there is no wiggle room in, in the things that we have in front of us right now.
All right, this is, rides the ARPA train. It's over.
Yeah, I would make a motion to encumber another $30,000 for the acquisition of the rental units of the two trailers.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Virtually painless.
This is almost like your little $250 gift card. You're not going skiing.
Yeah, no.
No skiing for you, sir.
I had to buy white ski pants and dial.
All right, we have our comp reform
Came up very well.
Presentation.
I could did that.
What, did you?
Oh, yeah. What are we on?
Comp reform presentation.
Oh, good.
I would respectfully suggest, Mr. Chairman, if we move that down to be right before my report, you can get through the remainder of your business without my long-winded presentation, and these folks can leave and...
I second that motion.
All right.
Just a suggestion. It's your agenda, but I, this is going to be 25 minutes?
All right. Without questions?
Without...
No.
And we all know there'll be questions? We all know that.
So we'll go to seven?
All right, yeah. Grant acceptance and possible votes for local cultural council and town clerk early voting grant. So we have a grant in front of us for local cultural council, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's the amount of $8,100 for local cultural projects. It was submitted by Lisa Freeman.
Make a motion that we accept the $8,100 grant for the local cultural council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the next one is for the town clerk. It's from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Secretary of State for the FY '23 early voting reimbursement. It's in the amount of $4,285.52. And it was submitted by Chris Furno, our town clerk.
Move approval? Did you make a motion?
Yes. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Brings us to number eight. Designate Board of Selection, a Board of Selectmen member for public safety communicators negotiation and possible votes. In an email with Matt, I had actually volunteered to take that, unless anybody else is interested in it.
I would be willing to do it if it needed. If not, that's fine, too.
Anybody else care to do it?
No.
You got that cat that ate the canary look over that tip?
No, no, no.
He's good enough with the central mass planning stuff.
Yeah, I have a passion for planning. No, I'm actually one of the members of this negotiating team. Some things are best left unsaid. I don't want to serve on that committee.
All righty. Would you like? Be happy to do it.
I move that we appoint Chairman Morse to the position of Public Safety Communications Negotiation from, representative from the board.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Number nine. So to close the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants, I believe the fire chief is here this evening regarding a warrant article that he had put in front prior to closing it. Do we want to have Chief Vincent come up and discuss his? Do we want to have Chief Vincent come up and discuss his proposed warrant article Because I believe he has some additional information on it.
Man, do we have something from economic development that we need to do or no? Bob mentioned that.
Well, having, oh, this is for the... Hello, Mike, what do you think?
This is about taking the money out of the ambulance funds to use.
That is, is one article.
Whatever everybody else wants to do. I think the, them, those funds should stay towards the purchase of the ambulance, but that's my opinion.
Any objection to inviting the chief up to discuss his side of that?
Nope.
Nope.
Chiefs, come on up. Good evening to both.
How are you?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come to you again. My apologies for not being at the meeting last week. What I would like to say about this is that as a fire chief, as an emergency management director, that our job is to manage risk. And so, anything that we request, there's a reason. We've thought it through carefully and we've talked about it. And we don't do it without consideration for including all our members and as well as the community as a whole. I did watch the meeting and so I prepared some statements. I know, Tim, at the end of the conversation, you mentioned we don't want to set them up to fail. And I'm going to say that if we, if we did not fund this, that we are in fact setting us up to fail and that we aren't managing risk. And we're going to get into that. Basically, what we want to do is, we've sat down, Kelly and I, Assistant Chief Manning and I, and talked about all the reasons that we need this, this cruiser. And it's on me if I haven't been able to articulate that so that everyone's able to wrap their head around it. So, what we did was we sat down and did go over the reasons so that hopefully you guys will understand it. And we also will be wanting to reword or make an addendum, change the, just a little bit, change the warrant request. It is 60,000. And the, being the fire chief here for 12 years and also having institutional knowledge, I know that we have done this in the past. It is not new. We have done it by means of the ambulance reserved for receipts because the ambulance has always been supported by the chief's car. It's even to the point where there's line items in the budget for it. And we also have records that show that it was taken, that we did a lease in 2004. So, we got to that point because there was no other place to go. Well, now we're 20 years later and we haven't fixed the problem. So, we'd like to articulate that. And Kelly presented it to Capital yesterday just because we're hitting every place. And so, I'd like to turn it over to her. And then if you have any questions, what I would ask is you let her go through the presentation and then fire away with questions if you'd like.
So, I think the question that came to mind when you guys met two weeks ago was whether this vehicle directly supports the ambulance department. And what I really want to hit home is this vehicle absolutely supports the ambulance department, particularly, it has since the early days of our ambulance service in 2004 where that cruiser that was purchased before the one that you're currently using was purchased from the ambulance department. It was a lease purchase where they made a $6,000 payment starting in 2004 for five years. The total cost of that vehicle was $30,000. And then his next one was replaced out of free cash. Correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah, that one came out of Capital.
So, the vehicle's always supported the ambulance, but even more so in the years following the COVID pandemic. And like I said to the Capital Committee, we have several things that are essentially working against us post-COVID-19. As you know, the hospitals are really, really full, the ERs are really, really full, and our EMS personnel are currently stuck at the hospital for up to an hour, even longer, trying to drop off a patient. And the same goes with our mutual aid partners. So, all these ambulances, they can't get back to their respective towns in the normal, timely fashion, which is causing our mutual aid requests to go up. So, in 2021, we went mutual aid 15 times. And in 2022, when people started feeling more comfortable visiting the emergency department again, we saw those numbers go up. So, we went mutual aid 60 times, and that's a direct reflection of nobody being able to get back to their respective towns quickly, quickly with the ambulance. So, while the ambulance is out of town, there's essentially nobody at the station. So, this vehicle, the command vehicle, contains medical equipment as we've told you guys. It contains oxygen, it has a defibrillator, it has emergency medications such as glucose, Narcan, EpiPens, things that can save somebody's life while they're waiting in ambulance to come back from the hospital or to come from a mutual aid town because we're stuck at the hospital. Another thing that's indicative post-pandemic of trouble, and again, it's not unique to Douglas, but there's a shortage of paramedics and shortage of people that want to do this job. So, right now, we only have four full-time paramedics, and two of them are myself and the fire chief. No other paramedics live in town other than the two of us. We only have two members on duty. So, the call department's active, but the majority of these folks aren't available during the day to help. So, who's going to come out and back up the only paramedic that's on duty? Per our affiliation agreement with the hospital and the medical director, the doctor that oversees our service, there's certain medical emergencies that are serious that we're required to throw two paramedics at. So, emergencies such as chest pain, breathing problems, seizures, strokes, overdoses, we are required, per that agreement, to send two paramedics to. And as you know, oftentimes, we're two different people, one car. And if I'm not with him, and most of the time, me and him are not together during the day, he's at a meeting, I might be off at a fire. That was the case yesterday as I was presenting to Capital. And that's a problem if there's only one car. He has the day off or I have the day off, that sort of thing. And we're the only ones that are essentially available to respond, to help out our staff back here. Otherwise, they might be faced as the only paramedic to take care of somebody who's really, really sick or really, really injured or deal with a serious fire hazardous condition. We can't get there. And it's also not uncommon for us to be in an emergency backing up our full-time staff during the day. And one of us has to break away to go see, go to another emergency or go wait for a mutual aid ambulance to come and provide care to a patient in town while that mutual aid truck is coming. Our full-time staff is fairly new. Most of them have an average tenure of about two years. So, again, it's really, really important to their safety that we respond ahead of them and try to make a size up of the situation and give them some direction as they're coming in to the scene. So, this vehicle, again, directly supports our ambulance department and directly supports our very small paramedic staff and our very small staff in general. And again, we only have one car. It's 10 years old. I talked about the maintenance costs, how every year the costs are increasing exponentially. So, every three fiscal years, the cost to maintain this car has more than tripled. The car needs to be replaced. If it has a catastrophic mechanical failure, or say it even strikes a deer, we don't even have a backup car. We have nothing. We're going to have nothing to get out to those folks, to get out to help our staff or to get out to help a patient who may be awaiting for an ambulance. Because the only other vehicle that we would have to use potentially at that time is a straight cab pickup truck. That's not going to hold all the equipment that we need to carry. The other consequence of not replacing this vehicle means that I continue to use a personal vehicle to respond to emergencies, which is not appropriately equipped with warning lights and a siren. This means that, like I told the Capital Committee yesterday, oftentimes, I have to drive in traffic to somebody's medical emergency. That, to me, is just not acceptable. I'm, I'm, I want to get there to save your life. It's not good if I'm going to your emergency in traffic. I'm expected to be on call 24/7 for emergencies. I use my personal vehicle for daily business such as inspections, and I use it to tow town assets like our boats and our trailers. It's full of the same equipment the fire chief has in his car. Right now, the way I look at it, it's a, it's an area liability for the town that I'm responding on a regular basis to emergencies and doing daily department business in a personal vehicle. I'd hate to get struck on the side of the road. We hear the state troopers getting hit all the time. We respond to medical emergencies on the side of the road and accidents. I'm just looking for that support for my safety so I can get to somebody's emergency as well as support all my staff back here. We wouldn't continue to keep asking if it wasn't an absolute crucial need. And again, it directly supports our very small full-time staff and us only having four full-time paramedics at this point in time. And like we said, based on the history of using ambulance receipts for appropriation to fund this vehicle, we think that it's a small cost to pay. So, it'd be $13,631 a year for five years to lease purchase this vehicle. And I think that's worth the cost of a life. And I think that's worth me being able to get out in the middle of the night to support my staff who's dealing with some really serious stuff. And two people, for the most part, aren't enough to mitigate an emergency. So, I think the cost is worth it. And I appreciate your time again for listening to me talk about this.
Any questions, anyone? I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have lights on that personal vehicle right now?
I have one forward-facing light and no siren.
How common is it to have both ambulances on the road, so to speak, so that you might call upon this vehicle to be a backup?
So, most of the time, if me and the chief are together, we're going to take the second ambulance out. If we're not available or not together, then we would either call mutual aid or we would, depending on where our ambulance is, coming back from the hospital. If they're halfway back from Worcester, we'll call them on the radio and ask them to respond. So, one of us, I would get in my truck and go help them. Or like the other day, I was at an inspection, they were around the corner and they needed help at a Lyft assist. So, I put on my little red light and I drove around the block and I came and helped them extricate a patient from a house. I was right around the corner doing inspection in that car and the fire chief, I'm not sure where you were at.
Kelly was off a week and a half ago, for the whole week. I was out a minimum of four or five times by myself in my cruiser assisting the ambulance while, or at another call, stabilizing a patient before an out-of-town ambulance got there. Again, when we're together, when we're in the station, we can backfill and get a second ambulance out as long as we're both there. Or one of us can meet another one on scene. But you need cars in order to get other places to do department business, whether it be inspections or whatever it is. But again, both of them have medical equipment. And as I stated before, we have done this out of ambulance receipt for appropriations in 2004. It's 20 years later, the problem's not fixed yet. So, it's been, it's been, we've been being told it's going to be put in the budget. It doesn't happen, and I get that. But this is where I believe experience as a fire chief and being able to, I know Mike was worried about the ambulances and whatnot, we got that covered. We know what we're doing. We know how to run the department. We know how to space out. We've been spacing things out for years. Our apparatus are usually replaced five years behind when they should have been replaced. So, it's nothing new. And that's, and this is why I thought it was important to not hit the ambulance receipts all at once for 60 grand so we don't drop it, but we just make an annual payment once a year. It's one annual payment to cover the cost of the vehicle. And I, I think that's completely reasonable, and I think it would benefit the department and benefit the fact that we're trying to support our members as well. As many times that we have to back them up every day on serious calls, we go to the call, follow them, get them, and sometimes even many times go to the hospital if it's a critical patient. And that, and for the overnights, it's the same for both of us.
So, food for thought, the call that our department achieved recognition for that cardiac arrest save, I responded mostly in traffic because I had to drive through downtown at like 5:00 o'clock at night to get to North Street to assist the only paramedic working with that patient who was very, very sick. And then we waited for another call member to get in the front of the ambulance to drive us to the hospital. So, I responded in traffic to that call. Yes, the outcome was good, but that's not always going to be the case.
Question for Matt.
Yep.
The, the lease payment's $13,000 a year. We would have to go back to town meeting every year to approve that 13,000, correct? Because we can't.
No. No. One approval for the lease, I think, is all you need.
Are the reoccurring costs on it with the ambulance receipts? Because we vote to transfer out of ambulance receipts each year. So, we vote once and that, that would carry through for five years.
I'm not good at answering Gene's questions.
No, I, all the one is, I'm not opposing it, but it's a question that we need to really understand and make sure.
I think the argument would be that because the funds are in the possession of the town, you can let out the contract. But you would be, more or less, you'd be encumbering the full amount because you wouldn't, you wouldn't lawfully be able to draw the receipts account below the level needed to complete the lease. Now, we don't get that.
So, what's the benefit of spreading it out over five years if you're going to go in that, in that manner? Why wouldn't you just, because it's going to be five years, well, I don't know how many years, but it's going to be four or five years probably before they get an ambulance. So, why wouldn't you just take the money right out at the very beginning and be done? We average around $354,000 a year in the ambulance receipts.
Following what you're saying is what's it costing us to lease as opposed to paying for it upfront?
Yeah, it's a 6% to 7% interest rate depending on, you know, what we would, what the financing is, is for it. But it would be an attempt to not hit the budget all it, or the, that account all at once, and it would spread that out. And that's what was done in the past. It's just another option.
And that's what the concern seemed like, the concern was last week from watching the meeting, that you're worried about that. But the other thing was that information you weren't able to have was that even if we, and I, I think we've talked about it, I think we're, like we had the ambulance on Capital, I'd like to hold that off another year anyway. However, if we were to, let's just say for the sake of argument, that today we ordered a second ambulance. It's not here for 30 months. You're going to build up another two and a half years' worth of revenue that, before you would even get a bill for it. And I'm not saying I want to do that, but what I'm trying to put things in perspective because right now with the supply chain, it's two and a half years to get an ambulance. So, if you did that two and a half years from now...
We're just trying to also cover the fact that we're going to have to purchase two ambulances probably pretty close together, like within two and a half years of each other. And if you kind of march this out over into like fiscal year '29 and '30, it would just be another way to make sure that you could get both the ambulances because again, we don't know what the cost is going to be due to inflation at that point. So, what we predict the cost is today might be different. So, not hitting it hard initially may, may be a better option, but...
Right now, the ambulances that we have are operating very, very nicely. We haven't had any real major issues with them. They're in, they're in pretty good shape. So, again, I'm saying that you're looking at three years before you get one anyway.
So, for the benefit of the rest of the board, just so you, you understand why I have a concern because I'm on this other board, so I know what some of this stuff's coming up, committee. We got one ambulance in 2019. We got the second ambulance in 2020. That was a $100,000 earmark grant, and the rest of it was out of free cash. The first one was $238,000, the second one was $241,000. So, now, as nice as it was to get the $100,000, now we're, we're too close together. So, now they either have to short-cycle their purchase or try to stretch it out. Trying to stretch it out is a dangerous thing because they get into a condition, a situation where the, the equipment is failing. That's what their challenge is going to be. So, that's why I was looking at it like that. Kelly came in yesterday and she spoke about the, what her thought process on with the rotations. She's got a decent plan on how that's going to work. I don't know if it's going to benefit us at all or... I don't know if it's going to benefit us at all of spreading the payments out over five years versus just buying it all at once if that's what was going to happen, if it was going to come out ambulance receipts anyways.
If we didn't order an ambulance for another, we had talked about doing it this year, but if we waited a year and did it all at once, it would probably be okay.
And the other thing we could do is, again, we're rotating them on a regular basis so they're not getting the wear and tear that they were before. We were running them a lot longer. I think at one point, Matt, we even talked about going seven years based on the fact that we don't have the volume of calls that, you know, like a lot of other towns do. They're getting, you know, probably, some of them are double the amount of calls or maybe even two-thirds more the amount of calls in a year. We're rotating them on a weekly basis. One goes to the front, runs it for a week, put the other one, and then you're putting the other one up. And that seems to be working for us. And again, the fact that the supply chain is two and a half years out to buy one, it's sort of fixing itself, if you ask me.
Yeah, just looking at it from, I'm just thinking of from a budgetary standpoint. Kelly, you pointed out that you had 60 calls last year or the year before. And the last ambulance was bought with earmark money and free cash. We haven't seen any real spike in the growth of that account. That's my only concern overall with that, that's all.
Yeah, as I mentioned during the Capitol presentation, we're aggressively, I don't want to use the term aggressively because I know these are people that we're trying to bill, but we're trying to collect the revenue. And we're looking at strategies to get that money as well as looking at reopening the ambulance billing contract to try to collect some more, which can, has the potential to offset the yearly lease or the cost of the vehicle.
It seems like some of the billing contractors work really hard for you in the beginning to get your business. And then once they get comfortable with you, then they start to slack off a little bit. And we're in that spot, so we're just going to rebid it.
So based off of the dialogue that we've had back in here regarding your warrant article, which way would you like to present that on the town meeting?
Well, I'll answer that for you. Go for the whole thing, right?
If you're going to take it out of the account, you're going to save the interest and it's going to come out of the account anyways. That would be my thought process. I'm still going at the warm and fuzzy about it because the numbers just don't add up when trying to replace two. I have the history of the account sitting in the other room, I can easily get it. But the growth isn't there. It just fluctuates around $350,000 to $400,000. And if you take two ambulances, that, the prior cost, they were $480,000 for two of them. So I just don't see the growth in it. That's my only concern with that.
So fast forward to town meeting, this makes it to the warrant. Question is raised by the audience member who happens to be, I want to be nice, budget conscientious. Why not just throw $6,000 worth of lights on your personal vehicle?
Because it's older than the cruiser I have?
Because, because I have no use of my, that personal vehicle. So I'll just give you a little history. In December 2021, I bought a 1998 Ford Expedition. I expected to have it for a few months because we thought that his car was going to get handed down to me. I ended up getting rid of it because it wasn't as mechanically sound as I hoped it to be. And I then purchased a 2009 Ford Expedition. And I have no other use for that vehicle other than for work because it's totally filled with gear for work. I can't put groceries in it, I can't put people in it. And I think that's a lot to ask of somebody where there's other people in town. The police department isn't expected to use a personal vehicle for emergency response. They are able to hand down cruisers for other positions like the drone and the dog. It just, you know, that, the vehicle I'm currently operating, it's going to have a finite life too. It's a 2009 Ford Expedition, that is 170,000 miles. It's a stopgap to ensure that I can take care of my people back here and serve the community that I pay taxes in. And I think at this point, I need you guys to support me providing emergency response to this community and taking care of my people.
Don't take this questioning as me not to be supportive. I mean, please, I'm asking the question because it will be asked and you should be able to answer it. And I think you did.
The other thing I'm going to say is, we tried to get a little bit of money at Fall Town Meeting to replace some emergency lighting on our brush truck, and we weren't able to secure that funding. So I figured that if we weren't able to secure funding for an emergency vehicle that was already in the town's possession, that it would be difficult for me to ask for money for my own personal vehicle.
And we're trying to, we're trying to move forward as a, as a professional fire department. We're not, we don't want to go backwards, quite honestly. We, we have real emergencies that we're going to.
The lieutenant, who's my equal, he's afforded the opportunity to have a vehicle as well as other folks at the police department. And I know his vehicle was purchased with another funding mechanism, but I need the same support as he has, and I need the same support as other people in town who are providing emergency services. It's just a lot to ask.
Question for Matt. I just want to respond to the one thing, you do get a lot of support. We, we as the board do support you quite a bit. So I just, I don't want you to.
I'm not debating that.
Yep.
I'm simply talking about the vehicle.
I want you to feel that when, if you don't get one thing, that we're not supporting you at all. You get a tremendous amount.
That is not what I'm implying.
Of anybody sitting at this table. From a budgetary standpoint, is there any room in, in your best guess to moving forward to budget this $13,000 into their, into their operating budget for the purchase of the cruiser? Ultimately, the, the best thing that would solve their problem is to get it into their budget so we're not going through this. It's painful for everybody involved to go through this. I've met both of these people at, at multiple venues in town, and, and we keep going through the same thing. So if it's something that we could entertain and think it's a possibility, maybe you do do the lease portion of it and then you're able to infuse it into their budget moving forward. But you have more knowledge about it than I do. So if you, if you thought we knew, then I would go back to my original thought of just buying it in one lump sum versus all the time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So everybody has a point of view. My point of view is that money spent on interest is wasted. It is complete waste. So if you're going to buy it, buy it in lump sum, buy it cash, don't pay interest. This is just, you're paying rent on somebody else's money and the, the instinct to spread the cost out over several years is a good one because this is what we're trying to do with many of our projects, is we don't have the growth and the levy and the overall revenue base of the town to do large, chunky expenditures each year in order to advance policies. We have to, everything we've done has been about trying to smooth out the growth, whether it was the teacher contract, a whole bunch of really big things that we've done, were all designed to try to keep the overall budget of the town growing at about the same pace as its revenues. That having been said, no, in future, this may be the last time you have this conversation because the hope is that in future years, as we, and the budget forecast will reflect this, the relative size of the economic development projects compared to the existing tax base of the town are so large that you will have room to put things in the budget. But what we have decried now for several months is that we were hoping this would happen in fiscal '24, and it has not materialized, it will be fiscal '25. So the question presented is what does a fire department, ambulance department do to see for its needs between now and then? And as I've shared with a couple of select, what asked me, I don't like the way we manage this restricted receipts account because we put this year, $370,000 of that into the budget as general revenue. So we transferred the money out. And the way we're doing it is we're taking it all at once for the sake of argument, July 1st, July 2nd, right? It all just comes out. And now the ambulance restricted receipts account has to build back up. And I would much prefer we do this on a monthly basis because the ambulance bills more per month than we take out per month. So you would have this, it would be really slow accrual, but it would never dip below a certain amount. And you have a better sense of what you actually have to spend on any, any equipment that they deem necessary. They don't just have to buy trucks. They could get IV pumps or replace cardiac monitors. Those are ambulance equipment I think would be appropriate to take out of the ambulance restricted receipts account. But this, this step function almost, if you want to call it that from algebra days, right, is jarring because it's, it just means we're always hovering, but we don't know what the actual balance that's useful to us is because we don't know we're going to take out the next year. So that would be one reason to spread the payments out over five years. But if you're saying it's 6% or 7%, I can't get 2% money anywhere, so why would we spend out 7% money? Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and I agree with you 100% what these questions need to be asked, just so everybody fully understands. We've already gone through this with the stabilization account for the fire charges.
This would be a tax exempt lease, so I don't know if I figure that in, it might be closer to 2% or 3%. Still, your point is well taken, 2% or 3% might be wasted then.
Interest is interest.
Well, at least it's less, but yeah.
It's less interest, but still interest. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, may I say one more thing?
You may.
I want to be very clear that I know this board supports me and supports our department. I was merely talking about the vehicle, and the discussion here is about replacing a 10-year-old vehicle that's at the end of its useful life. So I don't want the conversation to solely be personal about me.
Understood and duly noted.
And I would like to add that we actually need two cruisers. We're asking for one.
Fair enough. So kind of brings me back to my original question. The warrant article, are we going to leave it as the lump sum of $60,000 to be appropriated from ambulance receipts? Or did you want to amend it to do the $13,000 a year for five years?
Whichever the board prefers.
Yeah, that's really up to us. Matt, with your suggestion.
My recommendation is $60,000.
Does everybody agree?
I think we should do that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Just have a question for Matt for a procedure purposes. Anything over $10,000 and have a useful life of 10 years, four years of one, should we, or do we need to get the support of the Capitol Committee on that? Not trying to make it difficult.
No, I, so Mr. Chairman, the, this, the bylaw that creates a Capitol Committee is, needs work. Because it is, it's, it's all over.
I know it's a painful subject to do today right now.
Well, yeah, it's a pain point because it, these drafting conventions need to be followed and they weren't. Because a lot of the questions weren't answered. I have taken the position, and I'm going to try to stay consistent with it, that sources of revenue outside of the taxpayer that are specifically designated for a purpose within one of the public safety departments is for the, those department heads to spend. So we, we did nothing for the lieutenant's car in the police department, nothing at all. That was drug forfeiture money that came in. The police chief, using his prerogative, spent that money. That's forfeiture money, right? So that's the, the portion of the take we get when we bust somebody who's got a lot of money. This is similar in the sense that this is money collected for a service provided, it's basically a fee for service. It is outside of the realm of what we raise in the levy as a tax or as an excise tax or as any kind of direct user fee assessed by some element of the town for a permit or something like that. So to me, this resource is for the management of the department to manage. The select board exercises oversight, right? So if they wanted, if they only had 120 in the account and they came to you and said, we want to buy two cruisers for $120,000, you don't have to put that on the warrant if you don't think that's a good idea. So the, the judgment issue to you is whether or not you can at least tell town meeting, regardless of how we all vote today, if they took the money, if you give them the money, it is there.
Yep.
Right? But I don't know that the Capitol Committee, in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, Mr. Chairman, the Capitol Committee is balancing the priorities of various demands on a limited pot of money that's coming from the taxpayer, either in the form of turnbacks or excess revenues, whatever finds its way into free cash. And that budget allocation is there. And the committee's, by the way, very rigorous process is to score proposals and fund those that score the highest. Because it's all on this limited amount of money, but it, the free cash is available for everything. It's not designated for the highway department or designated for this or that department. We use the restricted receipts account for those restricted purposes for which it was set up, which is to support the ambulance.
This is very similar, the question was very similar in nature of what Tim asked about putting lights on, on a personal vehicle. There's a potential of a question coming up, so I just want to make sure that we have an answer for it. I'm satisfied with your answer. And I don't want to just go into it blind. We all sit here looking at each other at the, trying to figure out what to say.
Chance favors the prepared one. Why not, you said you need two, why are we only going for one?
Because we haven't got a favorable response on anything yet.
No, you get one today.
So what I, what our plan was, and I believe Matt would say the same thing, was, and I know we've all talked about it, going into the budget at some point. So we're amenable to get a cruiser if you guys, if you folks support it now, and then putting another one in the budget for next year. And then the one that we have now would be relegated to just inspections and things like that and not be responding to emergencies and relegated to save money by, when we have, send people to the fire academy instead of sending them six, spending 64 cents a mile, they're just going, they're just topping the tank off to go. Right now, we upgraded our, we upgraded our, we had to build $7,500 more into the budget for fuel to pay for reimbursement for when the, when the firefighters go to the fire academy.
Mileage. Mileage.
That's what I, I thought I said mileage.
It's late at night.
Mileage.
Yep.
Reimbursement for mileage versus just having them take the car to the academy and, and.
These are all the newbies?
Correct.
Are there any other questions?
So we have the warrant out of all of this?
We do. They've actually, we read at last meeting, they proposed an incentive, say we just leave it as written. Does anybody agree or disagree with leaving it in as written?
I don't remember what it was as written, but in the spirit of it, I think we.
It was to raise and appropriate $60,000 for a new cruiser out of ambulance receipts, if I remember correctly.
Well, it's probably transfer.
Yeah, transfer.
Yeah. So we'll change it from raise and appropriate to transfer.
Okay.
I'm making a motion that we put that on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second. Aiden seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody want to make a motion to close the annual and special town meeting warrants?
So. I don't have any.
Not really. Not really.
Okay, I'll second.
Oh, showing what I have.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In-person, early voting and vote by mail possible votes, and that's in red. Do we need to do that today, or is that a passover?
No, that was, that was added, I believe, by the town clerk to be put on, it was a suggestion, put on things not briefly anticipated, but it got added as a standalone. So it's just a revised agenda, so we just vote to approve it?
I have no problems with in-person, early voting, but I have serious issue with vote by mail, so I will abstain from that part of the vote.
So it looks like Chris is requesting that the board is selecting the vote to approve in-person and vote by mail, early voting for the annual town election that will be held on May 9th. So I wonder if that's going to be something we pick up every election for the following dates, April 27th, 8:30 to 4, Monday, May 1, 8:30 to 4, Tuesday, May 2nd, 8:30 to 6, May 3, 2023, 8:30 to 6, and Thursday, May 4th, 2023, 8:30 to 4. I'm trying to find a way to work this into a motion, but that's what we need to vote on.
But early voting as presented?
So.
Second.
How's that, Tim?
It's good.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes and possible votes?
Make a motion to approve the February 7th meeting minutes?
Second.
Good, motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was me. Sorry, everybody at home.
Make a motion, go ahead, Mike.
All right, I was still reading the first section.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 21st, 2023.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The comp reform presentation and your report.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go over, depart from, depart from anything remotely resembling good practice, and try to go over work in progress with the anticipation that sometime tomorrow or early Thursday, all of the slides will be done and we'll have a final proposal. And once the final proposal is fully prepared, then I'll go back and make, double-check the budget, QC the budget, to make sure that all of the comp reform concepts are fully captured by the budget, and then the budget and budget message would go out about the same time we do it every year. Pretty much ends up being the last week of March every year, no matter how hard we try. This year is especially challenging, I'm going to hand, hand this out. The objective of the project was to involve the staff to the greatest degree possible in conversations at the beginning and middle and end of this comp reform. Because the tables have a life of their own, and over a period of several town meetings, you know, they're going to, they're going to be that lock, stock and barrel article that nobody really looks at, they look at the annual COLA, and they figure, well, that's built into the budget, and that's what people are getting, and they're not really paying attention to the individual pay rates. I know there are definitely going to be people who look at the annual report, and they look at an individual's name or a position that they know, and they try to figure out how much a person is paid because it's a conversation they want to have. So, knowing that this will become an artifact that has long life to it, we want to try to get it right the first time and not have to go back and do too many edits after the fact. The first two pages of this document, I'm going to go in outline form, I'm not going to present the individual slides to you, I'm going to go over it from a 10,000-foot altitude, and you can cogitate at home as you read the, the slides. We went through an extensive process of diagnosing what the issues are and how we got to the point that we're at. And so this is the, why are we doing this? There are two pages here of answers to why we are doing this at all. One of the issues here on page three, I will talk to this one a little bit more, because I want you to, to understand what it is I'm trying to do, I want to make sure that it's effective way of presenting the information, so I, your feedback is welcome. What I wanted to do here was use an index value of 100, so in year one, every value is 100% of itself. Bless you. And then as we go out into future years, the index value is basically the ratio of that year's salary to the base year. And by way of illustration, what you're seeing here is that the largest single rate of increase and total increase was in the rates of pay paid to firefighter lieutenants. And there was a reason why this happened. At one point, lieutenants were paid a very small stipend on top of their base rates of pay, and that was your thank you very much attaboy reward for being lieutenant, taking on the additional duty. When we did that first contract, I want to say this was six years ago, we broached the concept of rank and wanted to get real separation between lieutenants and, you know, rank-and-file firefighters, to recognize the additional responsibility into, frankly, by the time somebody makes the rank of lieutenant, it's somebody we really want to retain, so we wanted that pay rate to stay competitive over a long period of time. So that index value is between 140 and 145. I'm going to call your attention to the last line, this is better in color, but the bottom line, you'll see a little bit of a hook at the end, last year, from fiscal '22 to '23, those are your non-union staff, they all plotted on the same index because they're all on the same COLA schedule. Up until fiscal '22, there was a really big gap between all of our non-union staff and any of our union staff, regardless of whether it was police or fire and their rank. So last year, we did a 4% COLA for all non-union staff as a step towards cutting the pain of trying to do comp reform all in one year. So you'll see that little hook on the end, that's the 4% we did, but which still means that our non-union staff, relative to other Douglas employees, still have not had their rates of pay catch up to the same rate as the rest of Douglas, which is a mouthful because the rest of Douglas may not be going up very fast compared to the rest of the Commonwealth. Understood.
Take a fast bio break and turn the meeting over to the vice chairman.
Sure.
Just for a moment.
Should we wait?
No, I've read ahead, you guys can go ahead.
You've got this before us?
No, I just read.
No, he just did the Evelyn Wood speed reading.
Yep, he's, who did that? John Kennedy, President Kennedy used to read real fast, right? We have also, as part of this, and the next slide goes over our external comparisons, so it was just a summary of what we found when we did benchmarking to outside, positions outside the town of Douglas. We have a slide here that goes through the reasoning for a number of things we decided not to do. We decided not to hire a consultant to do this work, we have decided not to wait another year, and decided not to give, just use the same table and use COLAs for the catch-up because there were enough problems with the way the tables were constructed where COLAs may have been a financial solution, but they are not a fairness or best practices solution. I'll spend a little bit of time on this slide because it's a picture.
Sterling did it?
Sterling did not do this, although he could have done the upper right, so I'm just reading from left to right and top to bottom. The process that we followed was first to consolidate each categorization. So we have management, office assistants, public, public works, for lack of a better way to say it, and miscellaneous, and across many of those categories, we had too many grades and too many steps. So we ended up with this massive number of rates of pay, and we only have a small handful of employees. So the first step was to consolidate the grades, and the step after that is to score each position by its job description and place it within a grade. So, the step here was to form a matrix and say, what is the difference between an M4 and an M3? What is the difference between an M3 and an M2? On down the line. And then we had a number of management skills that were rated by all five members of the team for each position. So some positions may deal with a lot of confidential information, some may not deal with any. At the end of the day, we also asked all of the raiders to give a weight, how important is it to a manager's career to be particularly good at some of the skills in the skillset? So, no surprise, management of people, management of budget, management of assets, those three items were more heavily weighted by all of us than discipline and some of the other functions of management. So we rated each position, 1 through 4, on each of those categories of skills, and then took a weighted average. And the third box here is benchmarking, so we just looked at the rest of the world and how did the, on average, how does it compare to where we are on average? And that gap is where we want to, is going to help us establish the target where we want to end up. And then lastly, in this fourth box, one slide, I call this work in progress, the slide I haven't created yet, is the rationale behind changing the steps from our 1 through 10 annual progression to a 1 through 30 with five-year progressions, okay? But what we had to do, after we took each employee, rated their position, benchmarked it, we had to say, okay, so this is what step one will be for this grade, but this employee is not at step one because they've worked for the town, and they have been in that seat for 10 years, they would be a step 10. This is important for our people who have been stuck at step 10, who may have worked here for 20 years. So the way this program will benefit them is they will now be at step 20, and step 20 will be that significant difference from step 10, okay? A slide about the process. One of the things that came up as we went through this was, we thought we had a number of positions that were being paid hourly wages that were in fact management positions, following statutory definitions and Massachusetts Labor Commission definitions of management duties. So, this is where your eyes glaze over, and thankfully you didn't go to law school, so this is the Code of Federal Regulations definition, interpretation of the Fair Labor Standards Act, the definition of a management duty. No big surprises here. Where the rubber meets the road, it gets, the conversation gets more difficult, and we may engage Brian Mazur just to, on this slide, I don't have numbers yet on these pages, but the slide reads, "Management duties test Massachusetts law on confidential employees." There has been a lot of activity at the Massachusetts Labor Commission about confidential information and the management of certain forms of confidential information, take a person out of the hourly wage class and put them into the management category. Typically, that is focused almost entirely on whether or not the employee reports directly to their managing supervisor and keeps the confidence on matters regarding labor negotiations and discipline and other implementation of contract. But the language reads, "Regular exposure to confidential material directly related to labor relations policy or other equally sensitive policy information while directly assisting a person excluded from the law's coverage is grounds for finding an employee confidential." So, in defining whether or not certain positions in town might qualify as confidential positions and therefore be on the management scale, my test was whether or not that individual reported directly to me. Or, because nobody reports directly to the board, that's really kind of how this works, reports to me about an issue that has been charged to me by the board or by the statute, by the special act. What follows is probably close to 10 pages on the management scale because this is where we wanted to be very thoughtful about where people ended up, because it's big dollars, right? So, you know, the difference between our highest-paid managers and our, our lowest-paid managers is roughly $60,000. So we wanted to make sure that we defined carefully what distinguishes a, a grade one from a grade two manager. So, there's eight pages on that. After all the rating was done, another picture, because I'm a dork and I like to draw histograms, we basically, yeah, no, we put a bunch of dots on the screen and said, are the dots grouping in any way? Is that interesting or not? They do group, right? So, that is pretty much how we defined, we didn't get stuck on whether or not you were a four for four, made you a four. It was whether you were in the top group, close to four, that made you a four. Does that make sense? So, you know, obviously, between a two and a three, there's going to be some fine tuning that is possible, and if you're looking for a way, you know, how does a board of selectmen acting as a chief executive, how do you find a way to dig into this? This is one area where you might want to put some thought as to whether or not you agree with the assignment of M2 and M3. Bearing in mind that five of us did this, and positions were actually very consistent across the five of us. So we ended up, this deck is jumping around a little bit, we ended up regrading four hourly positions into management scale. The highway foreman, so that's the second-in-command at the highway department, the economic development project facilitator, the, we want to promote a position right now, which is currently the payroll, you know, the assistant treasurer processes payroll and administers benefits, so we're just going to say payroll and benefit administrator. But the thought is, we want to include this person now, going forward, in collective bargaining with us, and have that person as a confidential employee assisting the town administrator as personnel director, so if there are issues that don't necessarily need to rise to the town administrator's office, a couple of employees are arguing about something, or someone's confused about why their benefits weren't processed, it's going to go to someone who's a confidential employee, a member of the management team, and not immediately to the, to me as a personnel director. And of course, the person would exercise their judgment to know what needs to go straight up and what can be handled. And then lastly, this position has flown under the radar screen, I feel, for a while, but the office assistant at the Board of Health, frankly, should never have been an office assistant paid at that hourly rate because she is managing a fairly large number of people. They may be part-time employees, but there's quite a few of them. It's bigger than, frankly, it's bigger than the fire department, when you add up all the inspectors and everyone who has authority to actually enforce something, there's quite a few people involved here. And then, because you don't see it, it's the transfer station budget is an enterprise fund, but she's managing that fund, and it's well over $300,000. So it's actually one of our larger departments in terms of total spending. So frankly, that position needs to go from an OA5 to an M1. So those are pretty important recommendations because you'll see on the next page, these are some of our most expensive recommendations, and I don't want to pop this on anyone without ample warning. The budget would include an increase from fiscal The budget would include an increase from fiscal '23 to fiscal '24 anyway, right? So, for those employees who are going to get a step, and for all of the employees, we would have assigned a cola, I'm going to say 2%, because that's what, we usually follow the teacher contract and the teachers have 2. So if we did nothing, if nothing is done here, I would recommend a 2% cola and steps, for those who are eligible for steps. So the comp reform program cost isn't the '23 salary versus the '24 salary with the new table. It's what you got above and beyond what you would have gotten if the old system stayed in place. Does that make sense?
There's a delta there.
Yeah.
You know what that is?
So this last column to the right is, call it the additional spending on that position, above and beyond what they were entitled to under the existing comp tables. So obviously, that number's going to be big when you take somebody from an hourly wage and put them up to a salary management position. What are the offsets? I've got a couple of concepts I want to make sure I get out here. The highway foreman, by going to a salary, will not be eligible for overtime, except under the personnel bylaw, if any member of the management staff is forced to work on a holiday, a legal holiday, in their official capacity, they get time and a half. And that's not in anybody's contract, that is in bylaw. And frankly, that's holiday pay, it's bonus pay, it's not overtime. So we're taking a position that might typically earn between $12,000 and $20,000 a year in overtime, we're taking that overtime eligibility away, which is why that salary goes up by $15,600.
So you bake it and forecast it overtime into it?
Yeah. So the town is actually taking on more of the financial exposure than the employee, because that's at the high end of the range. So the employee will make the same salary whether it snows or not, right? So in a year like this, where there was almost no overtime to be had, they would still get the salary. In any year where there was an extreme amount of snow, they would still get the same salary. They wouldn't be eligible for overtime. On the office manager, we currently split the Board of Health Administrative Assistance time with the transfer station. So it's a, it's a 30-hour-a-week position, and the general fund picks up 19 of the hours, and the other 11 are picked up by the transfer station. If we give this person a substantial raise, that will filter through to the cost you need to recoup through the stickers, right? So we don't want to do that. So my proposal is, take that salary and put it entirely into the general fund, and take the office assistant, the part-time office assistant in the Board of Health office, and move that entire salary into the transfer station. So it's a like-to-like switch. So there will be no cost implications filtering through the cost of a dump ticket, a dumpster. I'm going to stop there. Any questions?
Lot to digest, yeah.
It is a lot to digest. It's a lot of work. So the rest of these pages, and this is what I'm finishing, it's just tedious. It's not that there's, there's no more analysis to be done, it's just tedium of calculating these numbers and showing you on the edge here. You will see a trend, specifically on this first management grid, those people who were hired very recently at very high salaries in order to be competitive with the marketplace are not going to benefit tremendously from this change. It doesn't make sense that they would, right? We already made the adjustment for the position when we went out to hire.
So they're already near the median income for the position?
Yes. And you will see that in the back, in the appendix. So you'll see that they may not actually make out as well as they would have if we left the system in place, and they got a step, but they're still going to get a raise 24 over 23. We had to do that to be fair, because to change that, you would have to change the whole table, right? And move some people significantly further to the north, which then takes the program out of the affordability range for us. We're releasing this now because there is no secret, right? So all of these numbers have been discussed and disclosed with employees. In some cases, we had two or three different meetings with individuals, so they know where they're going to come out. The office assistant positions and the highway positions are less complex, right? So the distinguishing characteristics between an OA-1, 2, and 3 were more narrow, could be more narrowly drawn. So we won't have five grades anymore for office assistants, we'll go down to three. I do want to call out one other thing here, which is, we really wanted this program to benefit our hourly employees more than our management staff, because they're the ones who have been extremely loyal and have suffered from lack of steps and small colas. So you'll see the dollars flow a little bit more generously towards our hourly employees, especially on a percentage basis. So I go to the same exercise for the highway workers. Then in the back, this will be in appendix and it won't be part of the main deck, just wanted to show you, these are our benchmarks. So, there are two sources for the benchmarks. One is the job posting board for the MMA. So many of our positions, people are watching the board and they say, well, my position just got posted in Medway or Wayland or Medfield. And I can see there's a range being offered for that position. And then way over on the right, always furthest on the right, is Douglas. So you can look across this chart and see where Douglas ranks amongst the towns that either are currently advertising, or a subset of towns that are kind of a lot like us, right? So Sutton, Uxbridge, Derbych, Millis. Just for giggles, I threw Hull in there because I was curious. About the same size as us, nothing like us at all. But they're pretty close to Boston, so you would expect their salaries to be higher, but they're actually not necessarily that much higher than the others. So it's Littleton and Millis that blow the curve the most consistently throughout this.
Millis, that's Mike Kaczynski's fault.
It's all Mike's fault. But so, for instance, if you just, and this will be the last thing I say about this deck, if you're the community development director of salary benchmarks, you'll see where we've, we're actually very competitive right now with that position, which is why we don't have a big raise in the program for that position, regardless of how it was rated by the raiders, okay? That is where we stand. We will finish this deck, and I anticipate, it's too late now, but I'm going to present it eventually to the finance committee in its finalized form. I have already incorporated these salary changes into the budget, and the budget is balanced. So this program can be afforded within the budget. So you're not voting money above and beyond what would be in the budget, it is the budget. My presently, my goal is this, I'm going to try to leave sufficient surplus so the budget will balance, but it'll actually be beyond balance, it'll be, it will be in the black. And the question back to the select board will be, what do you want to do with those funds? Do you want to change some of the numbers that were decided in the comp reform? Or do you want to restore some of the expense accounts that I, that I've cut already in order to get to the position that we're in? So, you know, I didn't do anything draconian, but I did have to do some pretty significant freezes of accounts in order to be able to do this, because I thought I needed to. I've got some cleanup to do. Right now, I'm about $90,000 in the black, but I think that's going to drizzle down really quick. Really, there's going to be, I know it's ridiculous, right? However many millions of dollars in the budget, and there'll be like $40,000 or $50,000 that's out there. That's where we're at. What I haven't touched on tonight is, we have already discussed the call firefighter changes, and they will be incorporated into this. So their table will be part of this proposal. What will change is that we determined that water and wastewater employees have to have their own table. This is getting crazy, trying to find people with operator licenses for both water and wastewater. They don't belong on a table with anybody else, they need their own progression. So Bob Sullivan has already completed a proposed table, and that will be voted by town meeting as part of this.
For all the high school seniors that don't want to go to college and that are watching the show, right? Go get your certification in wastewater or storm, wastewater.
Just get old, good old drinking water, right? It doesn't smell bad. Everybody's clamoring for it. It's not easy, right? You do have to have a good mind for math to get these licenses, because you're obviously doing chemicals and proportions. Don't want to put too much alum in the water.
I'd heard a 14-week program gets you into the system and then you can ascend from there.
These salaries are, the salaries for people like Bob Sullivan who have, you know, level 4 operator's licenses, in many cases are substantially higher than town manager salaries and police and fire chief salaries.
There are not a lot of those guys out there.
Very, very few.
Matt, do you envision everyone that was listed in this compensation table reform proposal to be a position that the town has three, four, or five years from now? Sounds like a loaded question, but I'm specifically thinking of the economic development guy.
Right. I don't know that you would necessarily replace that position once the duties of this current burst of activity are completed. You might, you might still have some of those duties picked up, but by a more junior staffer that is part of the community development staff and not at this level of responsibility. There's a really big difference between managing green communities grants every year for, you know, our application's going to be 100, I think this year we're looking at $200,000 application, and two grants each for $3.5 million, which for Douglas is a big amount of money to apply for and receive. There's just, there's a qualitative difference, and I don't know that we'll still be doing this. I will have one caveat, Mr. Chairman, for selectmen voting, which is that we have had a long-term plan now for some time to resolve the town's ownership of a number of lots on David Street, and that would definitely put the town in the industrial park business, and that you would, you would definitely need somebody full-time to manage that process.
Two observations. One is, seems to be an important factor, the number of people the person is supervising. And I think I can argue both ways. Sometimes that's important, sometimes it's lesser important than the function of the person. And then secondly, comparing larger communities with smaller communities, it depends, what's the activity, what are the needs of that community? And they sometimes can overwhelm the size. A small community could have a lot of water and sewer problems that require a person with, with good background.
Can fix it, right.
So, as a general, yeah, it's important to look at those, but I'm saying that they may not be determinative of the value of a position strictly on those two criteria.
Following up on that, you know, speaking for myself, who walks 20 steps to his office every day, works independently, gets a ton of, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there's value in being a go-getter, too.
Me as well, I'm sole personnel.
Yeah, yeah. Just on that economic development position I'm looking for here, it doesn't really look like much of an increase, it just looks like we're recognizing additional hours.
No, it's an increase.
Yeah.
It went from 30 to 40 hours.
No, it didn't. It went from 44 to 60.
Sixty, yeah, almost 67.
About a 50% increase. Forty hours in overtime.
Well, that's one area that we think we should look at further.
And I thought you would want to, which is why I'm going to put extra money available to you.
Yeah.
But I think that, if you look at it from my perspective, we put this system of rating in place, and the five of us will do the best we can to support the integrity of that system, because there are relative positioning, not just absolute positioning. But you are the chief executive of the town, so if you want to make your policy decision to, and change the way that position is treated, then no pride of authorship, I don't think it's unwarranted. Certainly don't say that at all.
Well, I think your general presentation is very good and useful, but there may be some to tweak, and I like the fact that you've allowed some latitude from the board to...
Yeah, this is a straw man, so feel free to...
No, 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 hours.
Rearrange the straw.
The hours.
Yeah.
So there's a 30, sorry, there's a 30% increase in the hours, what is required on the economic level.
Yeah. I would, I would venture to guess that the employee actually already works...
50 hours.
A lot more than he charges us for. So that's just this. My report, I will keep brief, because it's the lateness of the hour.
So for us to be timely on this, it would be our next meeting?
I think you need to have a, you might need to have a special meeting next Tuesday. I think that would be the most, best use of your time.
Yep.
So that FinCom can have the thing for long enough. Because once you're finished with it, I would anticipate trying to do a video and putting it on cable.
FinCom has their meeting next Tuesday as well.
Yeah. But this is complicated enough, and I'd rather not have all the basic questions at town meeting, I'd rather have something for people to watch, and they can interact with you, or they can call our office to ask questions, so that we can move things along maybe at town meeting.
Do you envision this presentation being made at town meeting?
No.
Okay.
No, the moderator would rather die than let me speak for 20 minutes unabated.
That'd be right up there, if we wanted to do the insurance selection at town meeting. Not a good plan.
As far as my update goes, look, this has been the major time suck. I want to put you on notice that there's just some things you can't make up, right? So, nothing happens on the planet Earth that does not in some way affect Douglas. There will always be a way, right? So, we came to the office, it was the day of the snowstorm, and we had a notice that the bank that we use to invest in the, basically overnight lending, had CDs at Silicon Valley Bank, right? To the tune of $30,000. And clearly, there were some hurried phone calls made, and we are in the process now of investigating much more deeply what this all means for us. Now, the FDIC covered all those deposits, right? So the town was made whole, and there'll be about $72 of interest that needs to be posted, and we've gotten assurances that we'll get the 72 bucks. The bigger issue that we're engaging, so it's InterFi, so we basically, Bartholomew takes our investment qualified funds that are governed by our investment policy and sends them to Leader Bank. And Leader Bank was farming that out to FDIC-covered institutions. But all FDIC institutions are rated, right? So the question presented from us to them was, well, how did this happen? Right? This bank was in trouble for a few days, so why would we make an overnight CD deposit with this, with them? They're in trouble. So please clarify that for us. So we've been interacting with Bartholomew, I didn't get the update from Cheryl yet, but the good news is, we're all made whole, you know? The bad news is, there's a certain amount of financial instability that's out there. It will affect us all in some way, because many of the banks have invested a great deal of money in sovereign debt. And they're also simultaneously, interest rates are going up because the Fed is boosting rates. So we have an inverse curve at the moment. So, banks heavily invested in bonds, as interest rates go up, bond values drop, so the value of the assets held by the banks is actually bottoming out. So that's the instability that you're seeing across the international market, and we cannot escape with our town of $9,000 and the implications of that.
Nice no damage, but it's a wake-up call.
Yeah. Tradition Energy put out our electric contract. We have a fascinating moment in time where energy prices are actually coming down to a very reasonable level that they may not come, stay at for very long, and may not come back to for a long time. So as I think I've mentioned, we have had a five-year contractual relationship for electricity purchases in the forward market. And we have one year left, so Meredith called and said, now's the time. We've got to put your load out to bid, because you're going to get a great price. So I'm going to get a briefing in about a week on the results of the bidding process. The last time we did this, we had like 12 or 14 bidders for the town's electricity contract. The town's aggregation... The town's aggregation, so Good Energy, is also taking advantage of this opportunity. So the really big buying group will be going out in the next couple of weeks to get their rates locked in as well. This is due to the extremely warm winter, and, you know, it's a positive thing to look forward to. We were hoping not to get caught. Some municipalities were caught needing to buy energy precisely when contracts were very high, so we've avoided that.
Is the likely new rate going to be better than the existing one, or is it just a good deal the way it's going?
It's going to be, Mr. Chairman, it's going to be higher than we're at right now. So the town is at 9.7 cents. I think Constellation is selling to Good Energy at 10.7 cents. The market's whatever, 30, some odd cents. I would anticipate the town would be closer to 12, but we'd be locked in for a longer period of time.
And it's been higher than 12, though, obviously, if we had done it three months ago, or four months ago?
Yeah, so it's actually a great time to be putting bids out. We are not going to be able to do heating fuel, though, because we don't have money. So town meeting has to approve the funds. So really, I don't know what's going to happen in July, right? Rates could be back up. I'm going to stop there. There's plenty to talk about, but I think that's the best time.
Just have a follow-up question. You touched on restoring some of the expenses that you froze with that additional. Do you know roughly what that would represent?
So I took just about all the money out of the tree warden's services contract, so I left him with maybe 10. I took money out of accounts that we typically go into fall town meeting and use free cash, either to supplement or fund. So we've been transferring every year at November town meeting substantial funds into the tree warden's budget, so that they can take care of thousands of dead trees in the town's rights away. But I put that down almost to nothing in order to grab like 10,000. And then I, the pun, I guess, is intended, I froze snow and ice. The idea, again, being that if I had to balance the budget on the back of that, we could still spend through it, and we have substantial free cash reserves that would backfill it. I am not comfortable with that move, though, because we have had a policy unwritten and unvoted on, but to every year, increase snow and ice, an appropriate amount to keep track of inflation, because drivers are getting more and more expensive, salt's getting more and more expensive, and so that we would have fewer demands on our free cash reserves every year, because this, going back for 75, 75, 75, you know, it adds up very quickly. It'd be better to have it in the operating budget. So that's, those are the two main, pardon, two main areas.
Yeah, and I ask that just because we need that information, too, if we're looking at this and making any recommendations, so to know where to actually cut, should we put that back? Because it's like a false positive, you have 10,000 in there, but you really kind of slid stuff out that would have been a false.
And the high-pressure valve here is overtime in the fire department. So there was an, there's an increase built into the budget for that line item. I'm not confident that it's enough. I'd rather have them turn it back, and come up short again in November and have to do another transfer.
Do we have anything in place for emergencies like we ran into with that pump? Kind of scrambled a little bit when we got surprised with a $50,000 pump. Would we have any?
All catastrophes are, by definition.
No, I know that.
Surprises.
Is this for a pulley?
No.
Stabilization?
The good news, the good news on the fire truck with the damaged pump, is that it, it's good news and bad news. It took the contractor so gosh darn long to fix it, that we got the reimbursement check from the insurance company before we got the invoice for the repair, which means.
We're in interest.
No, but it means we can use the reimbursement, we don't need the money that was transferred by the finance committee from the reserve fund to cover that expense. I think.
You don't need to.
Sometimes Gino probably shoot arrows through my head for saying that.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
I'm pretty sure I'm right about that.
Just for the record, Matt.
The laundry's got to be washed the same way.
I found some money for the insurance company.
You did?
Yeah.
He just put the last nail in his coffin.
We don't say those things, Matt.
Nope. There's a slight difference, obviously. We have a, call it a deductible, that we have to.
And you're good with your report now?
I could babble all night, but I think I should stop.
I don't have any more questions.
That is completely not true.
Lieutenant Wister has no more questions, so.
All right. I don't, at this point, I would entertain a motion.
Tim Special?
What's that?
Tim Special?
No, we don't need a Tim Special this evening.
We're not doing that.
Nope.
Even though it said contract.
So I just need a regular motion for adjournment.
So.
Second.
Maiden seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thought we had something on the.